Welcome everyone to the study session for August 2022. Two items on the agenda tonight, first is the climate goal update. Probably should switch their name.
One of the same. They're changeable. And I'd like to hear you do it.
You need to have them.
Well, Zoom actually auto chooses Peter's name for me when I find out. Oftentimes we do see Peter. You just need to shave your head. I mean, with this fun, am I? Well, hi, everyone. So I'm Natalie Rogers, Climate and Natural Resources Manager for the city. Peter Passer.
Yep, Peter Passer, Public Works Director. Tonight, Natalie Prudhomme is going to give you an update on our climate action work that we've been doing. Then we're also going to have Courtney come up recently and talk a little bit about what we've been doing with tree codes since we've begun.
So. It hurts. I can help. That I'm actually. Right, Nicole, yeah, SOS. So today I'm just going to give you an update. So we have done a new greenhouse gas inventory.
We can't, we're both having trouble connecting. How do we, it's not recognizing to the wifi. It's not the same as at city halls.
It should just be your regular login on the staff. So your username and password you would use to get onto your computer.
The other thing that I do know, because I had an issue today, is I had to go in.
I had problems on the restart previous.
I think they changed my certificate.
You would have fallen off. Okay, go ahead. We'll. Okay. So. Okay, so, yep, so like I said, we're just going to be giving an update kind of on our climate action. We're primarily focusing on our greenhouse gas inventory, which we did because our climate action plan, which was adopted in 2018, using 2016 data for the greenhouse gas inventory at that time, calls for a regular update of the inventory. And so we worked with Good Company to do an update with 2020 data. And so I'm going to show you some graphics from that. You can kind of have a conversation on how we use that data and kind of what we can infer from it. I also am going to be chatting a tiny bit about PGE's green tariff update. I know that I've been updating y'all through the last year and a half, two years or so on how that's been developing. We're not going to focus too much on it because we're going to be planning on giving you a larger update in just a few, a month, a few months here. But I'll touch on it on how it relates to kind of what we're seeing. And then I did want to also talk a tiny bit about the upcoming kind of larger climate action plan update to the community that we'll be working on. That's another thing that's called with the adoption of our climate action plan. It's kind of more like an update document. And so I'll kind of give you a teaser on how that might be looking, kind of how it's going to be styled. And then, as Peter mentioned, we'll have Courtney come up there and we'll chat a little bit just on how we're seeing tree permits in the community for 2022. So just as a reminder for us all, kind of what our adopted climate action goals are. Keep this in mind as we kind of take a look at this inventory. So by 2030, net zero emissions from carbon free electricity. Not 2035, we're building energy as a whole, being a net zero community. So that's new carbon neutral. And then by 2045, a carbon neutral community. And then we also have kind of this honorary fourth goal at the bottom, which is why we always give you updates on our course program, which is not only in action and our climate action plan is increasing our canopy to 40% by 2040, but it's also kind of a big element to achieving a carbon neutral community at the end. So greenhouse gas inventory. So I attached the memo to the staff report and I just want to present some key takeaways at the beginning. So the first is that our building energy emissions, which is typically actually originally our largest sector of emissions for Milwaukee, is different, which is good. That's probably because we've been doing a whole lot of work in this area, working with utilities, working with other local jurisdictions, stakeholders such as Energy Trust Oregon, Community Energy Project, Energy Score Program, et cetera, to reduce kind of those energy emissions. Transportation emissions in our community are up. And there's a few things that could be contributing to that, but that's kind of a trend that a lot of communities are seeing. And this, also transportation emissions can be challenging for local jurisdictions, particularly of Milwaukee size, to address simply because of the large spatial impact and kind of behavior influencers that transportation has. So for example, we don't own a public transportation infrastructure company. And overall, community consumption related emissions are also up. Now, this one, I kind of want to tie to that, that last point, which is 2020 is where we got the data from. And as we all know, that was a really weird year. And so it might not be reflective of even 2022, 2023. So it's really just going to be time that tells us if this is a trend or this is kind of a, as everyone's staying home, we're importing more goods instead of going out and getting them ourselves.
And you know, I will point out that we use 2020 as that sort of reference here for this analysis, because that was the year that we had the completed set of data. When we started down to do the inventory update, we didn't have all 2021 data from the various partners that we get.
And so when we're doing these greenhouse gas inventories, we're kind of sourcing data from state agencies. We're sourcing it from our utility partners. And oftentimes they go through their own QIQC qualitative analysis and essentially just checking to make sure that the data is correct. And, and so it takes time for them to do that. So it's usually a few years back and kind of when we're seeing this data coming out from the state and even the federal government. And oftentimes our utilities will actually provide us with this data that they're providing the state or the feds early. And that's how we can kind of do this like emissions update a little bit more frequently when it comes to our utilities, rather than kind of working with the state and these larger agencies.
I understand getting utility usage data. How do we do transportation data?
Yeah, so that's, for example, we get a lot of it from the Oregon DEQ and the DMV, essentially vehicle registration, volume of gasoline and fuel sales that happen within our jurisdiction. So that right there is already where we can start to see maybe some, where this is built on a lot of assumptions, which is Milwaukee doesn't have that many gas stations. So we can't necessarily get a good understanding if people are going right over our jurisdictional order to another gas station. That's, we're not getting that data from. So those are a few point sources. We also kind of reach out to industry for that they have to do reporting on transportation fuels as well with their own work. So we reach out to DEQ to see if they have any information. If we did have like an airport or a marina, that also would be data that would be collected in an inventory. But since we don't, we don't include that information, transportation fuels related to like airline travel, that is reflected in the consumption emissions rather than kind of transportation sector emissions that are generated in Milwaukee.
And what about delivery services? Are they consumption or are they transportation?
So that's kind of likely the other consumption unless they fuel within Milwaukee. So if they are getting gasoline or diesel within Milwaukee limits, then we are capturing it. If they are getting it right outside city limits, that's essentially where we're tracking that consumption of the resident who's receiving. It's not necessarily, you know, are, is FedEx using the most efficient vehicle? We don't know unless they happen to be fueling and we're getting that quantitative data at the gas station. So that's kind of why I, we do like to give a big caveat with inventories. Their value, they are valuable when we're doing this work. They let us know the trends. They let us know the sectors that we need to be working on. But particularly when you drill down to a community of Milwaukee size, the amount of assumptions that are baked into it in order for us to actually take state data and get it down to, you know, a population of 20,000. It's a lot of times like a per capita estimate. So, you know, there's X amount of residents in Oregon, 20,000 in Milwaukee, we can kind of multiply it. But, you know, as we know, Oregon is a diverse state, rural, urban, even within neighborhood to neighborhood. Folks are not acting the same. So this is kind of a, an estimate.
So I looked at some of these. Oh, and sitting there for 20 minutes and three different handling on providers delivered in 20. And that really got me thinking. It was just like, this is crazy. And I tried, I mean, I didn't spend a ton of time, but I tried a little bit. See what I could find by way of, you know, Amazon or mail order delivery mileage. How that's gone up since 2020, but I didn't get anything very extreme.
So this is actually something that Metro has been looking at as they're trying to do the calculations. Because Metro has its own, as you know, climate action plan and its own goals. And as we're doing the regional transportation plan update, which is just like transportation system plan update that we're doing in Milwaukee, only it covers the whole metro region. That's very much a part of the conversation. So I'm just curious if you touched base with them at all to see kind of if what you guys come up with resonated or.
Yeah. So when we were working on this greenhouse gas inventory, Good Company was working with a few other communities. We actually finished first. So we're kind of waiting to see what the results from other communities are. Looking at past inventories for like Portland and even the state, that's really where we do see transportation going up. But then also building energy in general going down. That's oftentimes also because of more efficient technologies. Legislation has a larger ability to impact the grid and these kind of larger energy utilities compared to transportation. But we do coordinate, I do have meetings with Metro staff for public sustainability work. They did reach out recently for surveys for local climate action and sustainability staff, asking how they can help. Transportation was a big one that a lot of folks were saying, we want data, we want information on transportation, but then also programs and things that are more the county scale. I am curious to see how Clackamas County's climate action work is turning out. And I do talk to Clackamas County staff and they've, I think they are in the public comment period right now, but I don't, I haven't heard any more recent updates. So I'm hoping that at the county scale is where really we can see some more action. But then Metro, you're right, is the one who's, who's really regulating a lot of the transportation agencies, so.
Well, and I will go back to our original data inventory that we did. That was based off of like the 2016 data. And, you know, Tristan, you may recall Tristan, he was an intern that we had from Portland State. And he, he went through and did that inventory. And, and then as we were going through our, you know, our climate action plan process, we had good companies sort of validate, go through and get the assumptions that we made, make some corrections, where corrections needed to be made, because we wanted to try to, you know, have a process to go through in the future that we can sort of track, like here's, here's how we came. So we had, we put that together. And then when we started this update, we went back to Good Company and said, okay, let's look at this again. You know, if there's things that are changing, let, let us know. And you know, one of the things during this was how their record keeping on fuel sales has, has changed. We see some impacts on, on, on those, on our transportation. I don't know if Good Company reached out to Metro to, to check in the data. I don't know.
Yeah, I think just, I'm sure you're doing some wrap up conversation with them. So it'd be good to just be real clear with them that that is probably something they should do. Particularly if we're the first, because I do, you know, I see a lot of reports from Metro. So I can't tell you that I've seen a specific report about this, but I know this is something that we've been raising a lot on impact. That it's something that the Metro Council has been paying attention to a lot and really figuring out how do we address the fact that we have so many trucks going all over the region? What is that doing to our ability to beat our?
Yes, I mean, we, we did go back a couple of times to Good Company as we're going through this inventory. Some specific sets of data. Some of it was on like the carbon intensity of electricity, because we were seeing, based off of some of the data that we were using, seeing an increase, because, you know, PGE and electric utilities, carbon intensity sort of fluctuates year to year. Not a whole lot of this fluctuation. So if you're not, if you're not using the right year, you know, if we're using, if we're looking at 2020, 2020 data and using carbon intensity for 2019, that's, 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 it's different, right? So we had to, they had to dig, drill down a little bit deeper. And, you know, you can get some of the, you know, PGE's investment documents that they have. They have their, their climate sustainability governance documents, a lot of that information on their carbon intensity. We were going to get that information and use that. And then, you know, we did spend a lot, have a lot of discussion about the, the fuel and transportation piece, because it's, 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 it's strange because we're looking at 2020 where everybody stopped going to, into the office, but we're seeing an increase in those emissions.
Which might be because of where folks are fueling up, right? Because as we mentioned, we're essentially collecting fuel based, or the data based on where, where they are fueling their cars, right? So if they are not maybe commuting into the office, maybe they're only fueling their cars within home city limits. It could see a spike for Milwaukee transportation emissions simply from where those, that fueling is located.
Well, and what we've learned from Metro's study in this is there was a dip. People stayed home, but then people started running errands during the day and they were doing lots more little trips. And so it crept back up. And we, at the same time, saw use transit absolutely plummet. Only people who were using transit for 2020 were people who had to go into the, into their workplace and did not have another way. So it was effectively our most disadvantaged communities who were the only people who were still using transit. And those numbers are creeping back up, but it's a really slow, so.
Yeah, and, and public infrastructure and public transportation is the most fuel efficient way if it is well utilized. And that's the hard part is maybe look at kind of how many folks are using the bus, sitting on a bus, and how much gasoline does the bus use or diesel? Then you kind of have to start being like, okay, it is more fuel intensive that we're only having to. Unless it's like, exactly.
So is Metro doing a whole lot of carbon? GHG separating across the board, or is it just transportation?
I don't know. I don't think they're doing a cross the board one. You know, what I get is only the transportation piece. So that would be a good question for Steve.
Because I mean, it occurs to me that about two thirds of what we're doing is our interpolation of what basically the region or the state are doing.
Right.
And it feels like, if whatever somebody, if Metro's already doing it, maybe we would all be best off just taking what they do and then pulling in the stuff that we can absolutely determine in Milwaukee. PGE, Rockwell's Natural, that's pretty much it.
So we've had conversations, we've had conversations at the staff level. I know when Clackamas County was in the process of scoping with other local jurisdictions, what they would want, those jurisdictions would want out of the county's climate action plan. That is one thing that I know I definitely raised was saying, hey, it doesn't make sense if we're building all these assumptions and for each of us to do our inventory, Clackamas County could do a county wide inventory and then almost make it easier for each jurisdiction within to at least pull some data.
County inventory would be weird though, relative to.
Well, we have.
Because they've got all that rural, of course, Metro would be kind of more.
Right. But the thing is, most jurisdictions pull data from the same sources. So we're all looking to the state, we're all looking to EPA or the utilities, because those are the validated sources. We can incorporate our own data sets, but if you think about the work it takes to get that data, sometimes it's more like we're.
Hence my point that, you know, I'd rather see you guys not having to do all that. If there's somebody else that's doing, if Metro's doing it, or I suppose they can. It's, this seems like wasted effort, even if it puts us off a year on our.
Well, and I, I think, I, you know, I think Good Company work, they have a good sense. We go to get it. But, you know, who's got the most place sense for what we're doing? It is, you know, and trying to, trying to sort of keep as much apples to apples, because you know, if, if we're not careful, you know, we can, we can change assumptions that we're making in our inventory. And one would hold great, right? So, but yeah, I, I, yeah, there is, there is that, there is that flag. You know, we're all on sort of different schedules in terms of when we want to report out on our, on the work that we're doing. And maybe, maybe that there's times where it makes sense to, to hold off and wait until some of those data is served or more ready to be available.
So to answer the question, climate smart strategy is transportation specific, which is Metro's climate stuff.
I'd be happy to talk to Metro staff to, to see if they have an idea of what's.
A more specific transportation aspect. We're doing all of our safety program, which we can think about. The idea of that, climate perspective, less to allow kids to go to school without a parent, but car. We've done our half schools, which is to build infrastructure. There's a piece in the safe routes to school world where the next half is basically training kids, teaching them how to be safe cyclists, teaching them routes and all those things so that they actually can do that. And it's also, I think, in a lot of ways, training the parents to not be panic machines about that. And that absolutely hasn't happened. Towards the end of school, I happened to be on Linwood around the end of school day. And Linwood was stacked up from, I don't know how far down like to a B C. Because you have one parent turn left, one parent turns to right into the school car to left. At a crosswalk, it's busy. And nobody can walk. And it's different conversation for the engineers, but the point of this conversation is that most parents are still driving their kids to school.
So I actually have reached out to Nicole Perry, who is the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for Clackamas and, you know, with residence and the partner of Zach Perry, our DA leader, about Linwood in particular, but also more broadly, just to hear what her experience has been like trying to get that second half going. And she's really a little overwhelmed right now. So I am working on figuring out how I can help with that conversation a little bit. And maybe talk to you about reaching out to the PTAs, because she's really finding that it helps to have PTA leadership engaging in that conversation. And it come from within the schools, because, you know, like I went to the street trust presentation that was about bike training that Megan does at Hood River. And it was really inspiring and super cool, but her feedback was the same, that you really have the most success when you get buy-in from the school administration and you get the principals excited about it. And the PTAs are the pathway to having the most effective engagement with principals around this. Is that why you get, you know, you just kind of get the whole operation behind it, doesn't it? You know what the role of principal is in a, in a.
Well, and I mean, Nicole got into this work because she started as a PTA while doing it. And there was a group of PTA moms that were doing bike to school days and walking bus or whatever they called it, where they kind of walked and picked up more kids along the walk and stuff like that and gave out, you know, prizes of different sorts to encourage kids to ride.
And that PTA has just had, she doesn't know anyone in that PTA. So there's some, you know, just need to build it up from the inside.
So you don't think there's any role for school or the city as far as either pushing the state fund? Because down in Eugene, they have their couple, it was a couple PE teachers whose entire job used to go from school to school to school, teaching this stuff. That's all they do.
That's pretty cool.
And it's been a program that they're doing it 20 years, something like that. So do you think there's any role in us pushing on the state and or having conversations with who will?
I will defer to the educator table, but I think council absolutely could be one of those superstitions.
Council needing school or?
Council needing us.
I don't know with the, the way education is now, if people are concerned about learning loss, that this would be a top priority for schools. I would, I would think that OD at the state, I would think maybe even the OEA. Definitely PTAs. I just, knowing administrators and how the last couple of years have been, I could, I could see that this wouldn't be the top priority. I just think about like when I take my son to school, there's only, there's another family that take right to school and everybody else is in a car. And then Zep Monroe or Thompson gets backed up all the way down. And everybody's still driving, yeah, everybody's still driving their kids to school. But also over there by Wyndham, there are, there are a whole lot of sidewalks, you know, like if a kid's going to Linwood or Arden, gonna have more sidewalks to ride on. Getting, I, getting this to be a priority. Yeah.
Yeah. I was sort of this, I think, government clacking, Nicole too. She's just looking for the places where someone is popping up with interest and then going back rather than trying to get anyone to even call her. And I just feel that.
Yeah. Sorry, I derailed.
Not even this far. Transportation, I mean, this is, uh, no, I think, I think that there's opportunities, definitely. I know even before, when we were at this, uh, two plus years ago, we were talking even about staff internal, how to do, get more e-bikes in the hands of staff. And maybe as we have more conversations with, through the transportation system plan and stuff, we can have more programmatic ideas. Right, so. Um, I did want to point out a few things when it looked, when we look at our 2020 greenhouse gas, right? Because it can be kind of confusing when we take a look at this. So these are the lovely donut charts on the very left. These are our sector based emissions. These are emissions that kind of fit the common bins. So these are emissions that we can essentially attribute to Milwaukee. As you can see, building energy and transportation energy, those are our big ones. Transportation energy being the gasoline and diesel, building energy being our electricity and our natural gas. We call out also refrigerants. This is on the industry refrigerants over the last comparison. I'm going to pull up a comparison chart of 2016 and 2020. It's relatively stable. However, we might be seeing a spike in Milwaukee because there are particular businesses that are expanding that use a lot of refrigerants. But there are also incentives through Energy Trust of Work and that we can push them to take advantage of. And, and so there's programs as well for strategic, strategic energy management, where essentially they get free help in and out.
Where essentially they get free um, help in analysis when looking at construction to nature of the mission. Uh, but for the building energy section and the transportation energy section, one thing that's real. Oh, and also I should say waste disposal, we have a very small percentage because we don't have landfills within Milwaukee. And so that's another one of those.
So you're not calculating just our crash at some landfill somewhere.
Do, we do get those emissions from essentially our, it's our consumption, but then also we get it by. Our per capita chunk of the volume going through waste management. That's part of the data that is plugged into the company, yes. But if you did have a landfill located in your community, you would be having additional off gassing that might be considered in the inventory. So some communities might see greater chunks than ours, but it's not.
It's kind of managing CO two E, kind of words.
CO two E is carbon dioxide equivalent.
Right, right. Nothing being eighty six times more powerful.
Yes.
That's calculations built in. So this is an interesting thing just to think about on natural gas. We recall that Northwest Natural was working to convince us that they were going to be able to replace their fracked gas with. Uh, picking up waste, uh, you know, renewable natural gas and then hydrogen. So the same population of people, us, that's how much natural gas we're using. And that's how much.
Volume.
Renewable natural gas that is available for that same group of people. So you can tell that all of the critics that have said this are right. That if not remotely enough renewable natural gas being produced, all the dairies and all the landfills and all the mainstream plants. Even close to producing uh, energy for that. So ninety percent of what they're going to have to produce to replace fracked gas. Which means a lot of solar arrays, a lot of wind, but then make the hydrogen.
And um, on that gray donut that you see in the middle, that is emissions that we're able to account purely from the consumption and burning of fossil fuels. So you can see it's primarily transportation and building energy. Gasoline is a big one. Um, where it has electricity, um, it's really important to realize that electricity is electrons, right? There's no emissions tied to electrons, but there are emissions tied to generating those electrons. So that's why when we see thirty three percent electricity, like of our portion of emissions. That's from natural gas and coal being burned to make electricity. That luckily we shall be seeing, will be seeing, no shouts, will be seeing over the next uh, decade plus decreasing. Due to uh, recent legislation, which is great for us. Um, however, um, it, it's just really important when we kind of think about folks. Because oftentimes the message is electricity is dirtier than a natural gas. Um, this includes coal from Boardman, um, coal plant, which was closed. So our upcoming inventories will already be smaller from that. But also natural gas will be shrinking and then that kind of argument will go with time, just even with existing legislation.
So is that why, I mean, the report said natural gas usage increased by thirty eight percent, which really caught my attention. That's because of less natural gas being used to generate.
So this data is from uh, the years of Boardman was open. So Boardman is included, yeah, in here. So the natural gas increase in consumption, that might be tied to behavior. Um, and it might also be tied to, I mean, right now as well renewables and.
Uh, I, I, I think you're correct though, as, you know, as they're pulling off the full generated power of. P G's taken out, they are in, in many cases substituting natural gas to make up that difference as they're. As they're transitioning to these other, other sources, you know, solar.
Yeah, but this is showing a decrease.
Oh, so then it's due to behavior oftentimes. So when we're, when you're looking at the natural gas decrease or like at the home at the. So the natural gas section in here is, is natural gas being used uh, uh, for folks' furnaces for their stoves and ovens. That's what that chunk of natural gas is. If you're seeing a decrease in natural gas overall from that consumption, that is end user behavior. Or more efficient technology as well. That could be causing a decrease in natural gas consumption. When you're talking about as a whole for natural gas and when we're including the electricity sector. Then what Peter said is right, as we kind of start to shrink, like get rid of coal. I mean, we don't have the renewables right now to like turn them online instantly. So you're usually supplementing with natural gas as well as if you do have renewable that maybe are more variable during the day and time. Um, some boat places are not set up at the moment to be using either things like hydro or any battery storage. And so some places are then leaning towards natural gas, even if they have renewables, if they're intermittent.
And, and, and you know, that, that's part of it too in the region too. So hydro is in all this, what they're able to deliver to the grid. Year to year, because it's different on, on what they have in that reservoir. So, you know, in years where there's, it's more droughty, less rainfall, you're going to see changes in fuel sources for, for generation. And we see increase in natural gas and when, and when it's more wet and there's more water. You see, you see, you'll see some, some deep declines in, in, in those fossil fuels.
The other thing that's not reflected in this as far as our greenhouse gas summary is. That, that is the amount of CO two produced by natural gas after it's been burned. So for every, whatever, million gallons of natural gas that's burned. There's a hundred thousand gallons of natural methane that's released into the atmosphere somewhere in the system. At the, at the wellhead, piping, at people's homes, their stoves and their furnaces and. Our water heaters, they sit there and leave. And that's eighty six times more powerful gas than CO two. So that doesn't, nothing, nothing there reflects that back.
Mm hmm. This is, this is data essentially when we get natural gas data, when it comes to the consumption level at folks' homes. This is from Northwest Natural providing us what they're charging their customers for their usage. It's not for all the pipe upstream. Um, so I did add just down at the bottom there, just to call out, you know, natural gas, we have thirty three thousand metric tons CO two equivalent. So you can kind of see, you know, ten percent of that, thirty three hundred metric tons, um, which is not insignificant.
I understand that.
Wait, okay, so I. So the number you're using is what Northwest Natural is charging their customers. So it actually does capture leaks post pipe.
At least post pipe, post, post meter.
Right, so you can do an estimate of, you know, whatever, ten, ten percent, what would that be? Do you want to just kind of?
That's when, I've never gotten to see almost college reports, all those university reports.
Yeah.
None of them that I read wrote down, this is what's happening at the burner chip. This is what's happening with pipes. This is what's happening. At the wellheads, this is what's happening. They just did this amalgam.
Okay.
Of all those places.
Yeah.
There's this much thing.
Because it would be useful to have that.
Oh, it'd be super useful.
Once it leaves the system. Because I don't think we can authentically say, and I'm not looking to be a politician, let's be clear here. But I do think that it's valuable to be as accurate counting transparent as possible. So I think that we probably could say something about leaks that is more accurate than the statement that you just.
From what standpoint?
You can do, I think Peter's, no, he's not tracking right now. So if we think there's some way to estimate how much a house has leaking, for example. So I think that, I think what Mary Ann was mentioning is, is leaks that are something through the production pipelines. So from where it is fracked to even where it gets to the home. And then there are definitely leak. And I think uh, what we saw from, I think this question has been asked at Climate Solutions um, at the most recent. It's another study or work session, which is it's, it's expensive to test for leaks within the home is what it sounds like. And so there's not a lot of available data. Um, there are a lot of studies done, uh, particularly when it comes to air quality. Um, that does capture some of that. And so we can kind of look at that in particular on impacted communities, such as communities with low income. Who aren't able to update their appliances, who are stuck in rental housing. Um, but there's not really good sweeping broad studies on it, I think because it is expensive and nobody's really wanting to fund. Given that Northwest Natural does offer free tune-ups, maybe we can ask them if they would share their data on. You know, what is it, what do they find when people take the pump on that offer? Where, where are the leaks and what are the tune-ups and how much, you know, what, what difference does those make?
We'll, we'll take a look at it. Uh, what I, the one point that I was going to make was, so we said, you know. People are billed for what goes, the, the, the gas that goes to their meter plus what's transported through the system. Because, you know, there are other surcharges on that, on your natural gas bill. So you're paying, you, you pay, you pay the cost for P G to deliver, or not P G, but Northwest Natural to deliver gas to, to, to the home. That includes, that, that bill includes what they lose in the system, right? Even though they, even though they. Yeah.
I think it is, yeah. I do, just for the sake of time, because I know that um. Fun night of discussion tonight, we can kind of, I just wanted to highlight this really quick. Um, more than anything to highlight, you know, looking at where we can influence as a local. And where it comes down to regulation, to policy, to programs, to education outreach. Um, you can see that on the electricity side, um, each of these, we kind of are already working at the policy, regulatory and programmatic level. To address it all of them independently. So electricity commercial, so we have some commercial programs through Portland General Electric that folks are able to take advantage of. That, for example, Milwaukee takes advantage of uh, for our green future impact, a hundred percent uh, carbon free electricity. However, um, uh, you know, large power consumers also have the opportunity to do direct access. Which means they get the option to source their electricity. Um, as far as I can read for H B twenty twenty one, um, they, that does not match the R P S requirement. Uh, increasing um, carbon free sources. So I believe that there are going to be some, yeah, constraints coming up. But um, for now, that still is a hard um, audience to work with in terms of trying to values match for renewables. Because oftentimes it can come down to economic values, right?
What percentage of our industry is using or what percentage of our consumption is, is from these third party sources?
My, my understanding, I don't, I don't have the data, but we have a large customer that, that takes advantage.
One large customer.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. It's, it's, um, they're very good about making sure that it's confidential. Um, so they don't, we don't get a lot of detailed information at that granular. Doesn't sound too granular, but it is, I think, good our scale. Um. Well, if the, if the uh, inflation reduction bill passes without getting picked apart too much further. Then there actually will be pretty substantial incentives in there for that sector. Mm hmm. So. And that's another one with Energy Trust of Oregon, their commercial and industrial programs specifically. And a lot of it is tied to doing the legwork analyses, sourcing the equipment for these companies. So it's less of a upfront burden on their end. Um, residential, so this is where I do want to mention a little bit about P G E's uh, community grade tariffs that we're working on. So that essentially would be increasing, the goal is to increase the voluntary participation for renewable electricity through P G E's existing kind of programs. Or for community to craft essentially a new program that's tied to community values, community based resources, essentially customized. To make sure that it matches the values of the community themselves. Um, and so uh, we are hoping to come back in a month or two, uh, November, September, October, October to um. A few months, um, in October to talk to you about where we are in conversation with P G E. Um, we essentially have the overview summary, um, there's going to be a, hopefully a tariff filing this year. Um, there's a few steps that Milwaukee needs to take and can take, depending on how participating we want to be at these stages. Um, and so I'll present those options to you um, in October with a little bit more detail. We're having conversations with P G E. We're also having a lot of conversations with other local jurisdictions who are kind of working on the same programs. To make sure that we're all hearing the same information. And particularly when it comes down to program details, we're kind of, for, for small communities in particular, we're kind of all getting the same type of expertise.
You know, one of, one of the issues with, with where we are, we're P G's right now. You know, some of the, you know, the issues that we see with inflation and supply chain, try to, try to program out the construction of some of these. So what would be new solar facilities to serve the communities that are interested in some care? You're, you're seeing much higher than, than is desirable. So, you know, they're, they've, they've gone out to R F P to go out, got R F Ps. And the range, they're, they're seeing a pretty broad range and trying to, trying to narrow that range down. So it's. How to, it's crucial where we would be comfortable and talking.
So. And they're also, sorry, they're also balancing like the new uh, R P S kind of requirements as well. To make sure that they're sourcing just for larger grid usage. And I think that they're, I mean, it's not that they're not looking, it's more that they're trying to have, run a lot of initiatives at the same time. And it sounds like um, there are a lot of balls in the air for them right now, but we're pushing at the staff level definitely.
And there's a, you know, there's a big debate.
Right.
People, communities want, want that solar. Those carbon, that carbon energy, there's a demand, there's not. When the supply doesn't meet the demand, that certainly impacts the costs of those. Increase in those, those developments. And when you don't have, you have some of these issues with, you know, the. Where components sold, components are being built or they, you know, all, all those pieces sort of factor into what the pricing needs to be. So they've been. I'm not gonna, they've been slower than we would like to, to provide us detail on pricing. And we're hoping by October, we're going to have. Basically, we can sort of share what, what we're looking at.
Are they, do you know, doing any sort of analysis that sort of looks at our supply restrictions? And, and, and how that's affecting the price and going, okay, if we were to wait three years, the price will drop to.
Okay, I mean, they're, 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 they're trying to project all that in al- along with, you know, their R P S requirements. And in Milwaukee, you know, the total megawatts that we would need to, to reach our goals, was it seven or eight now? Thing, it's not a, it's not a huge, it's not a whole. So it, it would be, you know, just a small, a, a small sliver of a pot or jerks. So, yeah, they're, 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 they're trying to project all those things. Those difference.
Mm hmm. And there, um, a lot of communities are wanting this. I mean, I was talking to P G E staff and they did a quick kind of check of their territory. And I think they said over seventy percent of their territory is covered by communities with climate initiatives, which means that there's going to be a lot of demand. Um, and also some of these communities are really wanting a customized program. So I think that they're, they are trying to, Milwaukee is the first out of the gate. Us in Leaverton were really the ones who are kind of leading the way on this. So I do think that there, we're the first ones asking some of these hard questions. Um, but yeah, we'll hopefully have answers, more concrete answers for you in October. Um, and so just, this is information, so this shows our twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Uh, it shows exactly kind of what I was talking about, where we're building energy dips, our transportation energy increases. Our consumption uh, emissions are increasing. One thing I really want to mention is, you know, when we're looking at these consumption emissions. These are the ones that are really hard to address at the city level. Because it takes a lot of programming, education, outreach, staff resources. I mean, these are the farmer's market table type conversations, the table, or the conversations around the dinner table that need to happen around. Where are we getting our food from? Why is it important to shop locally? Um, so. So, you know, these are the ones, those are the higher apples on the tree, so to say. So it's um. We definitely lean towards a lot of community-based organizations who are already starting those conversations and doing that work. Um, and hopefully, uh, you know, as our climate program is able to become more robust, we can. Kind of fold in some of that to be a city-led action. Uh, but for now, I think really we're just kind of trying to uplift other organizations that are doing that. And then I just also wanted to mention, you know. Uh, we have a few things going on. I'm gonna skip through a lot of the energy ones, we talked about that through kind of how we reduce those emissions. I do want to caveat, you know, while our transportation energy emissions are going up, this is a community-wide inventory. This isn't an operational inventory, which would just be city emissions. We are electrifying our fleet. I mean, I feel like every few months, we're kind of switch. And we're on, um, we use a hundred percent renewable diesel, which has lower emissions. Um, we're also. Add, you know, we're doing the safe uh, access for everyone program. I, you know, for for transportation infrastructure, um, I do think it's important to say that there is an initial. Um, emission output related to construction. And so uh, oftentimes with that, you'll see essentially it's it's kind of the behavior change and time. That leads to a greater reduction in emissions through practice and through kind of community, just kind of action. So. Uh, but so that is a good uh, way for us to reduce our emissions to the community overall. But overall, our, you know, our operational emissions have likely decreased for transportation just through what we've been doing.
Well, and we have good news on the technical level about EVs, right? We're basically back for EVs. I've talked to several people who are like chopping at the bits.
Yeah.
Hopefully, right now, there's like, there's a poison pill in the portion. That says for EVs that are powering these states. And maybe are nearby, raw wood, you know, of China, Bolivia, or wherever. They'll go.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, so something I read said, although it sounds like it should be a whole bunch of. New EVs on the road, it's actually a reduction.
I will tell you, it's hard to buy, it's hard to find an EV.
That's true.
We have, we are struggling. On on our fleet side, we've programmed some, you know, Ford Lightning's to buy, just for waiting, you know, there. It's the inventory out there is limited, you know, personally and globally. I wanna, I've had the point where I wanna get a different. An E-Son class, and I'm having to wait a couple of months to get one. So, yeah, they're they're not, the door's not available. So people are buying.
Yeah.
Um, so climate, larger update to the community. So this is our kind of twenty twenty climate action update. Uh, we've mentioned before, and I think we got baked into our climate emergency declaration. That this is, we're calling it a qualitative narrative. And that sounds like a bunch of verbiage. To simply mean, we want it simple and. Oftentimes, when I'm seeing these climate updates coming from other communities, it's very technical still. It's in greenhouse gas inventory language. Which is important for leaders and decision-makers, but it might be less important for folks who are just living their lives within the community. And instead, they want to see, well, what's popping up around me? What has been happening around me? Uh, and so, uh, you know, a big focus on this is gonna be on the community narrative. So, uh, what have we been doing? What results are we seeing? Are we seeing anything in our community? Uh, what barriers exist? So like, have we tried any programs and we haven't been able to do them? Why? Um, something that, you know, a resident would actually want to read and be like, oh, so that's what the city's been up to. Rather than kind of more of the sector-based complexity-type focused um, discussion. So uh, I'm hoping to get that out this fall/winter. Um, it's gonna be an internal document, so. Um, it's gonna kind of look something like this. This is a lot of text for a slide. Don't worry about reading it all. I just want you to see the structure. So this is like a clip, which would be from like our Home Energy Score program, right? So it's just pretty much the action up top, why this action matters uh, in our climate action work. Like, why is it a good thing for us to have? How far have we gotten on getting it done? Um, and then also thoughts for the future. And the big callouts just being, you know, what can we do to improve it? Or what are the big key takeaways? So for example, for Home Energy Score, um, you know, we use our actual impact graphic. And I'll have, of course, at the bottom of this, a key, so you can see what those mean. But for the meantime, you can kind of see what we first dissected out. Um, and then unfolding kind of like the key things. So for example, residential energy scores provide information about home asset specification. Energy efficiency in home, utility cost, and carbon emission. But then, um, we're kind of doing a narrative on like how far have we gotten. And, you know, this is kind of more of the technical side, and what I really want to do is do callouts for each of these that are the. Key takeaway sections for next to each of them. So even omitting all of the texts, which maybe some people in the community really do want to read. And I sure hope they find this, you know, fascinating, but I'm gonna get it down to people inside the side of it. So folks can just easily breeze through it like an executive summary. Um, so this is the kind of thing that we're gonna get to, uh, probably by November is gonna be my goal. Uh, because there's a few other documents we're working on. So, uh, that's just kind of like a teaser. Uh, one thing for Home Energy Score that I wanted to call out, uh, over three hundred and twenty homes in Milwaukee have been scored. That's, we probably have more homes sold, but that's kind of a key coming out from this compliance, which is compliance is really hard to do. What is reliant on monitoring it by hour by hour. So what we're seeing is homes going on the market, well, what we were saying, I should say, is homes going to market and being sold. Fast enough that then the regulated party, which is the seller, can't really get a home energy score because it's not. Uh, when we are checking for compliance and able to have that interaction with folks, they're more than happy to get the home energy scores. Our compliance goes up to pretty much a hundred percent, um, because oftentimes it's not the homeowner making these. Like, what inspections do I need to get decisions? Um, we have been seeing more, uh, I have been seeing more Realtors, folks just emailing out of the blue, just being like, hey, I know you have a Home Energy Score program. Is this home in Milwaukee? Uh, which we definitely did not see at the very beginning of the program, so word is getting around. Uh, that could be partly because Hillsborough, uh, we kind of worked with them, we gave them a lot of our learnings. And they adopted their own Home Energy Score program. Uh, Corvallis is following, then just looking at it. So there's a lot of communities around the state that look at the programs.
You know, the other thing too, if you if you ever get a chance. That's, that's a site where, you know, that they house all of the energy scores that are taken in the United States, right? So you can look even, we're having all sorts of impacts. People in a row are getting energy scores. So you'll see a lot of. In those areas as well.
Is this, the Home Energy Score, is that accessible on like dillow.com?
Yeah, so it's a requirement for the program when a home's listed for sale, that advertisement that's baked in RMLS. So the multiple listing service where all of those websites pull the data from, uh, they actually have a ability to upload. There. So, uh, Dillow, Home Snap, all of these actually should be reflecting that in the listing. If it's in the original kind of RMLS form, um, it's also public data. And so it is kept in perpetuity on our, um, the Green Building Registry, which is available for the nation. It's just one community of it. Um, and, you know, if you sell your home again, or if you're hoping to. Say, um, energy efficient upgrades, those uh, home energy scores are good for, I think it's like eight years. For actually for things like green loans and other programs. So it's a good resource for homeowners to have, whether or not they just bought their home. Or if they're just holding on to their home and they're thinking about doing some upgrades. And then, um, this is, I really just want to mention really quick, a lot of the work that we do. Is just helping other communities, particularly small communities, look at climate. Um, you know, I think that is one of the most inspirational things that I've seen from my time here at Milwaukee. Is just how many communities reach out and they say, hey, you guys have a climate action plan, how did you do it? Um, we also have been seeing Milwaukee's action plan referenced in a lot of other um, communities. For example, um, our little city Milwaukee thing, our city things covering it, but uh, new, a small town in New Hampshire reached out to me. Um, asking about our climate action plan because ours seems to be the most readable. Um, and also the most just like practical from a small community perspective. Um, that take has been something that's been really resonating, and that's kind of something that I've tried to impart. On conversations with other jurisdictions, which is, it doesn't have to be hard, you know, it doesn't have to be a really complex thing. You can make it pretty simple, you can just do it by even resolution, you can do it just by a community group. Uh, and that, that, I think, calms some smaller communities who are looking at larger jurisdictions. Thinking, how the heck am I gonna do this myself? Uh, I also wanted to pull this. So City of Salem, we interviewed a whole bunch of different jurisdictions around their climate action. And development and what it contained. Uh, and then they actually scored a bunch of different plans. And I think a lot of it was based on like what components do they have? Those City of Salem's kind of like internal deliberations. But they had a a pretty robust scoring thing. Um, you don't need to look at a whole bunch of them, but there's two communities, Milwaukee. And I believe, uh, Ashland, who are in the twenty thousand population range, the rest of them around hundred plus thousand. To larger communities like Portland. And Milwaukee's still out of all of the plans scored, including, I think it was Portland and Bellingham. Milwaukee was like a third on their scoring of all these different communities, which, I mean, it's pretty impressive alone. But also considering that we are technically the smallest population on that list. So it just kind of small but mighty is the takeaway for our climate work. And, um, it's, like I said, it's been resonating with a lot of other communities. And then, uh, we mentioned this in our proclamation, but just our climate collaborative. Um, the things I do want to highlight on here, because I know we're running out of time, is just, uh, in September, there is Sustainability Fair. That's Milwaukee Bernal Stewart's Group. They're the ones throwing that fair. Uh, we're hoping to have maybe a booth either at that fair or on another weekend where. Um, we're just gonna be doing some information, sharing out. Uh, PGE also worked with Dark Horse Comic to make a new kids' comic book. Related to electricity and energy, and so they're launching it in Milwaukee. Uh, and so I'm working with them to figure out when we're gonna be. Uh, launching that comic book, and it might be at a booth just right outside.
I hope someone is doing a press release about that, because that is super awesome.
It is really cool, and I'm sure, I think, I I was wanting to make it a big thing, and then I realized like Warren's hair was like falling out from. Just how many events he was throwing, so I was like, okay. But actually, if you want to go back one second here, I just also wanted to highlight, we learned that at our Arbor Day celebration, which is eight twenty-two. Which is actually ten twenty-two in October, uh, we are gonna be able to have another electric tool exchange, which is exciting. Because I know that was really, it was the first electric tool exchange for PGE was in Milwaukee. It went off with a hit. It was great. Um, and so they're also gonna be debuting, uh, in Milwaukee, an all-electric tiny home as well, which is pretty cool. And then, um, I want to pull Courtney up here. Okay, cool. I'll let Courtney introduce herself to you guys.
Uh, hi, everyone. My name's Courtney Wilson. I'm the urban forester at the city. Um, been here for about a year now, and a lot of big things have happened for our program in the past year. Um, especially with the adoption of the private tree code. Um, so yeah, here's just some statistics. For um, twenty twenty-two tree permits so far. As far as public tree permits go, we've had um, seven go through so far. All have been replanted, only one uh, opt for the fee in lieu of planting, which that was for. Family place construction project. We had one denial because of insufficient proof. Uh, often that occurs when, you know, someone. Uh, believes their tree is hazardous and they get a tree risk assessment done uh, by a professional, they think it's not hazardous. Uh, since the adoption of the code about two months ago, uh, we've had seventeen private tree permit applicants. Uh, all of them have opted to replant, uh, but with this heat wave, I've extended the planting window for them just for the. Uh, for the rest of the tree.
And those type one permits, those are the ones that are, they're free to the community members. It's like dead, dying, hazardous, essentially. What we list out in our city code as kind of the reasons, the approval criteria to get a free tree removal through the type one.
Yeah, almost all of them were, uh, folks just applying for their dead tree to be removed. Yeah. Uh, one and a half denials, um. We had a person apply for the removal of one dead tree and one living tree next to it. Living one could be saved with uh, proper pruning. Point five, one.
Yeah, we got one, 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 two trees.
Um, and then we have only had one uh, application for a type two permit, which is a healthy tree removal. I say it's pending because they have yet to submit the application fee. I have not reviewed that one yet.
We do get some community members reaching out, asking about kind of type two tree removals. Oftentimes, it's around debris of the tree. Uh, there's a few folks who don't like the debris that that's putting onto their roof or into their pool. Um, and so we do have conversations with folks. They'll reach out to our Urban Forest Hotline and email. And Courtney will actually be with them on site to kind of talk to them about the tree. Um, we have some folks who think that, you know, as Courtney mentioned, it's like a hazardous or dead or dying or. Oh, this tree's gonna have to go because I'm redoing my rotating wall or something. And, I mean, we want to have conversations with them first. And oftentimes through those conversations, as we're seeing. They're not submitting permanently yet. And I think that's a really key thing. It's just that we want folks to know that we are here. And that's the benefit of having a community, um, urban beach program at a community our size. It's just that we can actually have that hands-on engagement and education and hear their concerns.
Yeah, and I'd say for the most part, you know, when people call the Urban Forest Line and they learn that, oh, my tree is probably gonna be a free. Uh, removal because it's dead, dying disease, they're relieved because I think a lot of people, you know, they look at the master fee schedule and they get a little. Scared of those prices, but, you know, once you let them know that, hey, that only applies if you're wanting to remove a perfectly healthy tree. Uh, as long as you provide, you know, certain documentation, most of the time your tree removal is gonna be free of charge. You just need to replant a new one on your property. And I just, I feel like a lot of people didn't get that information. Um, maybe watching council sessions, or maybe they weren't watching them and it wasn't made clear, you know, in our mailers, so. Really, not too many complaints.
Um, and, uh, folks are always welcome to to email if they're having questions or concerns about the code process. And what qualifies for type one and type two. We are working right now on our online permitting system. We're kind of in our beta testing stage. Uh, which means that we're, Courtney and I are throwing permits at each other to see if we can mess it up in order to find what needs to be fixed. Um, we're gonna be hopefully tying that to a merchant ID soon, which means that we can take payments through it. And, uh, right now, we do have temporary online permits, still have PDFs. It seems that that's been working really well for folks. And we do have pre-counter hours, which means we're kind of at the waiting for folks to walk in at JCD. To see if they have any questions on the permits, we can help them fill out the person. All in all, so our pre-development, uh, we've had a few conversations with folks through established pre-development meetings. And pre-application meetings with planning team. So these are folks who need to work with planning on some sort of development. Um, these are not folks who are just able to submit building permits without any sort of discussion with the city. So I do want to throw that caveat that we might be seeing some upcoming development tree-related permits that we didn't know were coming in the pipeline. Because we haven't had those initial conversations, because we didn't know they're submitting building permits. Um, but we've had four pre-development meetings in particular with planning. Um, so far, it's been really good. We've, I've had one one-on-one with a a developer in Milwaukee. And they were actually really just pleased at how kind of closely the city was able to work with them on it. And actually provide them and handhold them through the kind of the code package. So I think so far, it's pretty good. So I think so far it's pretty good. Uh, of course, there are some larger developments and they're, you know, trying to do the math in their head for how to minimize the amount of trees that need to get removed, but that's kind of what we want them to do. So. Um, oh, and then like, so conversations, but nothing submitted yet because those permits are submitted at time of building permits. So they're kind of in that waiting stage. And then, um, Courtney and I have been working and Peter have been working with Enviro Issues. And we just kind of wrapped up a big outreach material and kind of educational, educational material creation process. Um, and maybe Courtney, you can tell them how they can find this stuff.
Yeah, so all of these outreach materials are posted on our Urban Forest webpage, which is just milwaukeeoregon.gov forward slash trees. We've got all kinds of graphics, um, that go into detail for how to properly plant a tree, how to prune a tree, uh, proper tree establishment. How to measure, uh, tree D V H. I know that was a concern in council meetings, but we've got all the different scenarios where, you know, you have a multi-stem tree, a double tree, a tree on a hill. Here's how you do that. Uh, we've even got D V H tape for rent, uh, or a library of things for, uh, people to use as well as a pretty in-depth infographic tree, uh, that you can go through to see if you even need a tree permit, uh, to do the kind of work that you want to do.
Mm-hmm. And so, you know, a lot of these, we kind of heard were essential for both public code, private code, development code. We have a lot of more technical ones that we have, particularly for our developers, like F A Qs for both developers and planners, um, that we've been kind of making sure that folks can access. Um, and, you know, now we kind of get to move to the fun part, which is developing kind of more personable outreach materials that let folks know about kind of the program in general. Um, and we're going to tie that to our Arbor Day celebration coming up. But we want to make sure there was the good, you know, easy-to-find education handouts before we kind of worked on the fun stuff.
Is there any thought of including, taking one or two of these and including them in the utility bills?
That, yeah, you know, for a while we were talking about, once we were able to wrap up everything, actually being able to print it in a booklet similar to the pilot and sending all of them out in one kind of booklet to the community. Um, we've talked about using utility bills, particularly for other public works, uh, programs that we'd like folks to participate in. So utility bills are a good one. Um, you know, we just want to make sure folks actually get to see it and read it. Um, and so far our conversation is kind of a, a booklet with everything all in one seemed to be a good way to go. We've also tried to take some of these graphics and actually boil them down to postcard-sized ones. We kind of had a few at Carefree Sunday to hand out, so you don't need to read all of the words. You can just actually see like graphics. Um, so that could be another option, too. Um, we also have outreach materials related to other kind of vegetation code that's already existing at the city. Things around clearance requirements, who should be taken care of, your right-of-way trees, pruning vegetation. And, uh, we'll be rolling that out particularly as kind of fall comes and we need to do a lot of, uh, leaf debris cleanup things. That's a big one that we have here also, that we want to make sure folks are aware of.
What about videos?
I, uh, this, she is much more tied to social, not honestly, social media, but it's like the youth TikToks and stuff. The goose, I, I've never been on the TikTok, but, uh, that's who I point to. I'm living in it. This is my personality. I don't mind like that.
Millennial.
My heels are in the sand on that, so I'm going to have to defer.
Yeah, that's, that's been a discussion is, no, especially with Arbor Day coming up, um, kind of just like releasing, you know, some videos to essentially put these outreach materials in like a easy-to-follow-up video, but of course we need a like production team.
We have, we do have a very talented team of, uh, Galen and Courtney who are very proficient with a GoPro and iPhone. Uh, and that is, and then me, who I'm like the parent crouching down, taking photos at odd angles. That's already, that's why I have some really cool ones, too. What was that?
Partner with the Arts Committee.
Well, actually, you know, the need was, we did reach out before because we wanted, we realized there, we don't have, it sounds funny to say, but we need just general tree photos. Like, I mean, we take photos of trees kind of in the work that we're doing, but particularly, you know, when we're throwing together some materials sometimes, just, I think I've been using Maricamba's tree photos for the last like three years. So, um, building up using Comede and the Arts Committee and maybe working with local community artists on kind of just tree graphics, land photos. As simple as it sounds, it's actually extraordinarily valuable and it might be kind of a cool, fun thing that we can develop a little, uh, a project with. So.
I'm disappointed that I've heard absolutely no mention of a tree program-based mascot. We've got clearly now.
I know, I know. You don't usually feed a goose in a tree. That's one thing, you know, just there. So maybe, maybe we can find a, uh, equally as charismatic, but goose tangents type mascot that.
Waiting for you to say.
Try on Arbor Day.
Ooh. Well, friends of trees, those have, they do, they kind of end up looking like a broccoli, though. I'll leave it to the.
That would recommend they're natives. So, I mean, we do need, I, I, they are one of my favorite animals. But I'll lean to the communications experts in our, our city managers team to let me know if I can get a reference. But I will load it upwards, so. But, um, but yeah, and so that's just really what we wanted to share with you. Um, of course, I really recommend folks reach out to us if they have questions. There's my personal, um, email and contact up there. Uh, we also have our Urban Forest email and contact under Courtney's name. Not done yet. And, uh, and so if folks do have tree questions, just give us a call. I mean, we're more than happy to.
Thank you.
Of course. All right. And it's your turn to figure out if you can combat the technology power. Thank you very much.
So next time, Parks update, we'll be right back.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Right.
To you.
You wouldn't be surprised, like, I'm so, I'm at the, the u- upper millennial generation that is like the, we, we refuse to know how to rotate PDF, like, I refuse to know how to use the TikTok because somehow, like, it's kind of, I don't know. It's, it's like a whole selflessness. It's funny, the, it is funny going on some of the, um, the, like, blogs and whatever, where they generally does kind of, it's like, we're the Irish now.
At the same time, Gen X is at least one down.
Yeah.
One scorn.
Oh, I don't know, you know, and I feel like, uh, I feel like you're, Gen X in a way snuck by, loved by.
Oh, I don't know. It's, it's more just dismissed by all.
You just need to be your population, you know, quadrupled it. Because I think.
That's our big contribution. We didn't blow up the planet.
Might be the, the last, one of the last generations.
Not that we had any control over that.
Hi, thank you, everyone, for spending a little bit of time. If I could figure out more. Uh, so I wanted to come in tonight and talk to you about the discussion that started on May tenth, I believe, twenty twenty-two. Would you ask whether or not city staff could look at what options we had as a city? Up here, um. For creating a park to express some concerns that you had regarding outcomes we're going with, namely the leadership of N C P R D. And I do just want to call out that I have not heard concerns actually expressed about the staff. Uh, that this is largely a discussion and a debate about, um, the, how we as a city lead our parks and whether or not we're at the right juncture for the city to be leading its parks. So this was the context that you all provided with, um, at that meeting. One is determine the current park needs. I'm sorry, one is determine the city's legal path for leaving the district. And the second one is investigate feasibility of the city to get, provide park services. We're not going to go into everything tonight. I wrote a very long staff report for anybody who needs some good sleeping material. Uh, but tonight we're really going to focus in on a couple of specific items, uh, that I need some direction on before we get to next week's meeting. We're going to come back if you decide to proceed with a levy. Um, and we'll bring you that resolution at the next meeting for adoption. Then we would come back in September and talk about how Peter and I would pull together a team if you did decide to leave the district at a future date. So this is step one in the process. We're probably at least two to three more meetings before we've gone through the entire content that was included in that staff report, but we wanted to make sure everyone had context for the discussion we were having in advance for our discussion. Sound good? Okay. So this staff report in particular, or this presentation is going to focus on a couple of things. Why now? Why are we having a discussion right now just to help community understand some of that? Uh, what's going on with our I G As around that discussion about leaving? So what can we legally do or not do? Uh, then we're going to talk a little bit about general funding avenues for a future Parks Department. Uh, there's a number of them, and so we wanted to give you some options and choices. Question? And then, um, there's a, there's a secondary piece to all of this that in twenty eighteen, the city council actually adopted a resolution saying that you are comfortable co-mingling S D C funds in N C P R D. Uh, based on what happens tonight in the first of these discussions, then we should have a conversation about whether or not you're still comfortable with the. Because all of this would require me to bring resolutions to the next meeting. Sound good? Okay. So the biggest reason that we're having this discussion, um, right now, or my understanding is that we're currently having some pretty big growth here in the city. Um, we've seen a lot of development. Actually, if you walk outside of city, of the library right now, and you look to your north, you're going to see a large crane. We don't typically have large cranes in Milwaukee, but we are having a number of five-story buildings that are being constructed, um, in the, in the city over the first to the next three years. Some of them have already started. Monroe Apartments is a great example where we have substantial growth already in construction. Uh, the Henley Place Apartments are right behind us here. Those are in construction as of this week. So we've got a lot of, um, density coming. And if you look at that density in twenty seventeen, we had about ninety-four hundred units residential uh, here in the city with the new development that we're permitting and expecting to come through the permit process between three years ago and about three years from now. We're actually going to see that numbers is going to go up to eleven hundred. It's an eighteen percent increase in the number of residential units. And I'm going to show you how we got to that number next. So these, this is where most of that development is happening. Uh, you can see by the numbers, it correlates to the names as well as the number of units expected in each of those locations. Not all of these are going to happen in the next three years, but they're already, they're all going to be in process. So Hillside, for instance, is not going to be the full set of units, but we are expecting about two hundred and seventy-five of those units being constructed. So that makes sense. Yeah, it does, but isn't it four hundred new units, two hundred replacement units? It is, it's actually, yeah, you're correct. We can go down and correct. Thank you. Any others that, and we go back to, so just to be clear, we're actually going back to Axle Tree about spending here for the last five years. So we're trying to show the kind of pressure that's been building here in Milwaukee. Um, but it's a lot, I think, is the short answer. And you're going to have this overlaid on top of the fact that we already, um, are underserved in parks and the number of acres that we, per, per person.
And if I could just, yeah, just want the family development. So there's other resident, you know, single family thoughts.
Um, so to give, uh, all of you a little more context, we have been in N C P R D and, and N C P R D actually formed with us. So, and that's an important part of this context. There have been cities that have opted in. They have actually annexed into the district. We did not. And there's not a great piece of statute that explains what happens when you actually are part of the formation of the Parks Department or the Parks District in this case. Um, so we, we didn't annex you. And that's going to matter in the next slide when I talk about the statutes that actually overarch the process we go through. We instead have been going through an I G A process since nineteen ninety. We are on our fifth iteration of that, I believe. Yep, the duration of the I G A that dictates how we function within N C P R D. And importantly, in the two thousand and eight and two, uh, twenty twenty, um, I G As, we actually had language in there that outlined what would happen. The city decided they wanted to leave the district. But it's O R S two-two-two dot five-two-four. Um, and so when council gave me the direction to investigate this, that's where we started. Um. We, our I G A says that we will meet with N C P R D and have a discussion with them through mediation if we are in conflict. So we started by sending them a letter that said, are we in conflict? They were back immediately and said, yes, we are in conflict. We disagree that two-two-two is the correct statute for you to go to through if you decided you wanted to leave. Instead, they claimed that O R S one ninety-eight is the correct process. That process would actually put the, the authority into the hands of the county commissioner, instead of being in the hands of the city council. Uh, because the language previously was so clear, uh, that it's the city may choose. That's why there's a sense from the city and from city staff that it's actually your decision, because we, we jointly agreed on this language. So we went into mediation. We had this discussion. We, again, of course, could come to an agreement. It's literally, do you agree? Yes, no. There's not a whole lot of negotiation. Yeah.
So if this is what they're being. Mm-hmm. That. We can't leave what, according to our current I G A, we can't leave. Why do they need us to change our I G A?
So I think that they're interested in having, there's a couple of things. There's some language I G A that says if we, if this, any of this is deemed illegal, like it's no longer a functioning legal document, then we're going to come together and we're going to fix it. So part of their argument is, well, this doesn't work together, so we should come together and fix it and remove the language that says the city. Um, there are other reasons why they want to talk. We're constructing three parks right now. We're about to construct a fourth and a fifth park. Um, that's a lot of maintenance that they would typically be doing. We have, as the city, often been the developer of our parks. It's not clear in our I G A whether or not that should be yes, um, especially since N C P R D receives all the funding, the S D Cs. We're going to get into system development charges in a minute, the property tax and all the associated fees for using the park spaces. So that's one of these pieces of consternation. Who, who develops our parks? And when I say our, I mean our joint parks, these are mutual things we've done together. The city owns those parks. But we've been in this relationship where we've already changed. So what does it look like for those to get the maintenance that they require? But I think that there is a general break between what the city believes is the responsibility of N C P R D in the city and what N C P R D believes their role is and the city's role is. And that's part of why this conflict is coming to a head. Any other questions?
That was kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, part of this is, I'm also hoping that by just talking through this, we members maybe watching also gets their questions answered. So if you have questions, please ask.
Yeah, you want to, since you mentioned that, why are they so insistent on one ninety-eight? Because of one ninety-eight. I know because I'm sure it's because of the county side, but what is their legitimate reason?
So I think that one of the issues that, uh, that districts have is being able to bond for the assets that they're going to be putting in the ground and assuring that they're going to have a bond holder who's going to be paying that debt. Now, the loss is that if you leave, you still have to pay the debt. But I've, I've noticed this, and it's not just in Quackamas County. I've noticed this throughout my tenure with different agencies, that, uh, the agencies get really territorial about wanting to provide their service. So the threat that they won't be able to provide their service is, um, it's unconquerable. But I mean, they, they fight it often, not just here, but in other places. Um, in this case, the unique thing is there, there is no bond debt right now. There's actually no debt for us to pay if we're to leave. That's one of the unique moments of time when that there isn't a debt issue between the two agents. I think there's some fear, uh, whether it's warranted or not, the city, uh, legal team would say probably not. But, um, that if we were to leave under this, this statute, that other. that if we were to leave under this, this statute, that other agencies, other, um, O R S one eighty-nine-eight organizations would have a threat of other groups leaving those organizations. So this is somehow tripping into a future departure from another district. What we found is there's not another situation like ours. That's why it's really important to talk about the fact that we are unique in this, that the district was born with us. It's not, not with us annexing into it or being brought in. Does that make sense? So we, we actually don't know of another, um, conflicting agency where this, where the same situation would actually cause the outcome they're worried about. Another thing to know is that there's not another Parks Department that we can find in the state, actually that exists under under O R S one ninety-eight or two-two-two. Does that make sense? So they exist under four fifty-one, they exist under other formulas, but they don't actually exist under this. Most of the others are freestanding. Uh, agencies away from county jurisdiction. So we, we're actually, this is a very unique, very specific. We, we don't have another agency that would actually fall within this situation. But I think that they're, what they have told us is that there is a fear that this would lead to other departures from other districts. So. Okay. So, uh, the, the, you have some options for us, right? So the first one is the validation process. We have gone to court. Um, I actually, when mediation didn't work, our next step is to go into this validation process to look at the contract and have the judge say, does the, does the contract stand? Or is it wrong and we have to go down another path? So we've filed the validation process. We've hired a great attorney. Justin is on here. If he wants to add anything, um, but we're going through this validation process as we speak. Uh, the county has decided to be an intervenor. They're going to be involved in that process. They have made arguments that that O R S two-two-two should not be used in that case. Um, and we're now just going through all the hoops required in order to get the answer from the judge. Justin, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Go with that. Um, I, when I was joining as a panelist, I blanked out, so I don't know if you said something in addition. Uh, so if you could, i- if you could refresh my memory of what you would like me to consider adding.
You're totally great. I think that the short answer for council is that we may not know. We may not know for a couple of months whether or not which, which way you would need to go.
Okay, I, I did blackout, right? Right when you were probably talking about that, so, um, yes. The, the validation process is, uh, it's an expedited process in court. However, there are certain unknowns tied to any court proceeding, uh, even an expedited one set out in statute. And at this point, uh, because we're just kind of in the beginning stages, we don't know how long, uh, certain things could be drug out. Um, for, for legal minds among you, there's a variety of discovery processes that can be employed, that can delay things. Uh, that being said, it could also lean back the other way where we could, we could agree to stipulate to certain facts uh, and move forward in that way. And I think our legal team, uh, is working with the county to figure out, uh, the next steps of how we're going to move forward. So if while I was blacked out and said, the due date for response from the court is somewhat unknown, that's true. It could be anywhere, uh, you know, from a month from now, uh, to two months from now or three months from now, just depending on how, uh, the course of litigation pans out. Does that help?
It does. Thank you. Well, that sounds, if it's, if a response isn't even due yet, we're not going to have a decision in two months. We're going to have a decision at the end of the year, probably best case.
Uh, it's hard to say, uh, uh, councillor Baye, um, they've already responded actually, uh, to our petition. Uh, and right now, um, how it's set up in statute is we, we give notice, uh, in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks, and I believe last week might have been our last week of, of published notice. And at that point, uh, we work with the opposing side and the judge. I think there'll probably be a scheduling conference uh, to schedule either a hearing or to move forward into discovery. So it could, it could actually lean a little bit quicker. But there is also the, the, the chance that it could lean towards, or toward the end of the year. It just depends on, uh, the course of discovery and, and what we're able to stipulate and agree to with the county.
So there, we've talked about two legal paths that I think the county and the city are in conflict over, right? So two-two-two versus one ninety-eight, but there is actually also a third path that I just wanted to mention here tonight. Uh, in twenty fourteen, the county, N C P R D looked at changing its form of government, and they placed that on the ballot. Uh, as a part of our mediation process, we did have a discussion about whether or not that might be coming back again for discussion. And it sounds like N C P R D may be considering a change in form of government in May of this coming year. When that occurs, we did confirm that the city would have the choice whether or not they wanted to be a part of that new district. And so part of our discussion here tonight has been we're not asking whether or not you want to leave the district, but we are seeing it looks like you have a couple of options over the course of the next year. And if you want to take one of those options, we should talk about whether or not you can afford to and how you would. So that's really what this slide and what I'm, I'm trying to make sure is really clear is we're not voting whether or not we leave tonight. We're not leaving, actually, we're not even talking about whether or not we fund ourselves. What we're talking about is are we still on the right path? Is this still where council wants us to go? Should we be talking about a specific funding levy next week? And then this other S D C question. Um, let's see. Sure. It's frozen. Oh, there it goes. We're good. Um, so.
And if I could, if I could, um, I also, I, I don't know whether during that brief period when I was blacked out, you mentioned, uh, the, the we're, we're marching full steam ahead with the validation process, but the county has also requested uh, that we, we sit down for another session of mediation. Um, we forwarded, uh, the, one of the outcomes of the first round of mediation was kind of a it was a loosely articulated a- at the mediation, uh, list of items that we were supposed to exchange with the county to see if we could kind of come to agreement on some issues. Uh, that kind of loosely articulated list became a little bit more specific when we sat down and chatted about it, uh, in, in at the city, and we forwarded that to the county, uh, and their response to that um, was that they'd like to sit down again. Of course, they, they responded to our petition, uh, knowing that we're moving forward with that at the same time, uh, but we, we are working on scheduling a, another round of mediation. Hopefully later this month, uh, to see if we can come to, still come to an agreement, which could could ultimately resolve all of this. Uh, crazier things have happened, but I wouldn't count on it.
I do just want to be really clear to people who may be watching about what's in that list. So part of this is it's not necessarily a list of how the city wouldn't leave. It is a, it's a partnership discussion about how we might be able to partner if you all did decide you wanted to be your own Parks Department, or if you decided you wanted to fund your own. So it was actually a really great conversation. I think that, um, we had conversations about how we support one another in providing services to our our residents across both unincorporated and incorporated city. That includes things like what, how do we make sure that, um, they can still provide some program that they're dependent on one of our parks for? And how can we make sure that our, our residents can still get access to, um, swimming lessons? So those are the types of items that we're talking about right now. We can go into more depth on that at the next meeting or the meeting in September. It's probably better timing after we've heard them a little more about what, what their specifics are. So we're, we looked at a couple of, um, funding options for you all, if you decided you did want to, to at least have options to leave at a future date. One of those is to do a voter-approved levy. So N C P R D currently has a property tax that they levy in the city of Milwaukee. It's fifty-three, fifty-three cents, fifty-four-ish cents. It's point five-three-eight-two cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Uh, for the average home here in Milwaukee, that's about a hundred and eight dollars per year. And they currently collect that and use those funds to pay for things. The city could, um, choose to put that on the ballot and to collect that same amount of money. And at the time that the city started collecting it, you could leave the district and negate the charge from N C P R D. So the, the voter would not actually sense any, any cost change. They would actually play, pay the same taxes. It would just go to a different entity. Uh, the difference for us is that because this isn't a part of our base, um, property tax, we would have to do this as a five-year levy. So every five years, we would have to go to the community and say, we'd like to continue to provide your parks. Are you still willing? And then we would assess this. There are some pros and cons associated with that. Um, it keeps us talking to our community about parks, which is a really great opportunity. Uh, and it makes sure that we're fulfilling the obligations and promises that we make when you do it. Um, we've watched another community go through this recently, that's Happy Valley. Uh, so they are, they're talking to their public a lot about what's working and what's not, and, and what they want, uh, around a master planning process. So if you decided you wanted to go down this, uh, you would place us on the ballot uh, for a November election. We will be, i- if you decide that this is something you want to consider, then we would bring you a resolution at the next meeting, and you all would discuss it and vote on whether or not to place that on the ballot. Um, are there questions around?
I do have a question. So say we place it on the ballot for five years, and in the coming five years, we have master plan and process, and we know what we want and um, and whether that figure, you know, needs to be higher after that master plan process or not, I guess we don't ever have a way to make it a permanent rate because we're not a special district.
I don't know.
So not only do you have to do a five-year levy, it would be every five years forever.
Yeah, if you were doing this as a property tax, that would be the case. The alternative is that, um, we looked at this several years ago and Timmer Ramus was still our attorney. And what he determined is that it would have to be a freestanding board that became the overarching provider of parks services. If he wanted it to be set as a permanent rate, but I'm gonna let Peter join me because he seems.
Well, I, I mean, that, you know, it, as Sam was saying, if you wanted to keep it I mean, you could consider. There are some communities in the region that have set up parks, Westland, for example. You know, they have a, a part fee, and I think if, if my recol, if my memory serves me right, it's around nineteen and a half dollars a month, a month, that that's their, that's a part of their on, on part of the utility bill. So you could consider a, a fee. Uh, what I've put together is just sort of a, a table for, as an example, you know, based off of the, the levy amount for the the median home value, assessable value, and mentioned a hundred and eight dollars. Uh, and, and translating that to a, a monthly fee that's, you know, in the first year. It's just under nine dollars, about eight ninety, eight dollars and ninety-six cents. So, uh, and looking at a fee for our highest assessed value customer that we have within the city. You know, they would see a fee around, uh, two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars a month. So that would be one of our larger.
So that would not be a resident.
That'd be a larger, yeah, a larger business. So, you know, looking at a, you know, we've been going through this, uh, looking at some other financing options, but, you know, considering uh, a fee that was a flat fee that we charged, you would see, you know, it ran to around fifteen dollars a month. Fifteen and a half dollars a month for every customer. Took every utility account and charged a flat fee. Uh, and then, you know, looking at some other options, you know, and, and these were some quick sort of options, but, you know, you could also do a fee, a residential fee that also incorporates uh, an employment fee for those commercial industrial customers. And I, I, I think, uh, Tigard or Tualatin has a fee similar to that with uh, parks fee associated with a, uh, they also, uh, charge a surcharge for employees that, that are in there. So you can see the fee comes down, um, to, to eight dollars a month. Uh, which is pretty, pretty similar to the, to the levy amount. And then parks fee with a large industrial customer, they would see that fee go up a bit. So there is, there is that option.
So those last two lines are the same thing, same thing, you're just breaking out one large industrial customer, just as an example.
Yeah, one large industrial customer.
So the result of that is that fees, if we did it on a fee basis, it would be cheaper for the average homeowner.
Well, it, it could be so, and well, and we should be careful, that's average assessed. So it might not be the average home owner, it's, you know, the average assessed value. So somebody which rents or, um, yeah, I, I think that average assessed value is, is, is low in terms of what you think of what the median, you know, homes are prices. Uh, so.
Yes, salary is always.
It, it, it's my, it's my love. And we went back and forth with, with with Michael and Bonnie talking about trying to get that number. So we were talking the same number. Uh, and we settled on average distance. Uh, but yes, sort of that quick that, that quick review of it, you could perhaps get a fee that's that's close.
So the advantage is actually to both concepts. If it's a fee, obviously, as the city determines that we all want some new parks, the master plan, right? We've all done this big process, and we all say, okay, we want this and this and this and this. Figure out the prices, we go, okay, that means if we can raise the fee to X, if we did this as fee. But that's also true then. Only, you only get a crack at it every five years with the levy, which is actually better than a special district. Because in a special district, you gotta form a new district.
Well, you have to vote, right? You have to have one.
Yes, opposed to change to form a new district. Literally have to form it.
Once you set your rate, it's set. So you'd have to do a levy.
You can, you have to set the permanent max that you'll ever charge. And the day you do that, everybody assumes you're going to charge that today. So you can't say in thirty years, we'll need a buck for a thousand, but right now, we only need fifty-two cents a dollar. So we're setting our permanent rate at a buck, and nobody will vote for that because they don't believe you.
There is a nuance in that, and Peter was just reminding.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, I think you could have a levy, and so you could set the levy where it's at the same that, at where it currently is, and then based on the master plan and that engagement system. For the community and, and make adjustments. You could either go out and get the bond to do the capital or set a fee to pay for those.
And several cities do both. So Tigard has a, a uh, levy and they have a fee. Russian has general fund and they have a fee. So there's, there's definitely communities where both of those tools are used. And I have typically, so I've worked with parks of not for the last twenty-seven years. We've typically done them as geo bonds. And there's some benefit in all this, right? So we do the master planning process, right? Then the community is engaged and they get to make a choice about what, how important those assets. Um, I think the discussion that we've had as staff internally is that the, the property tax is an engagement tool with our community. This is what they're currently paying. They're used to paying it on their bill. They won't feel a change if they decide to support it. And so that's why staff put that is what we thought might be your first choice. It doesn't have to be. Um, but it does, it does give the community a chance to weigh in. I think that's really valuable and important. Parks are the most they're the, they're the place where we have community come together. So in a sense, it feels like all of the, out of all of the services we provide, setting aside, I guess, stormwater, rain, sewage, water are essential services, not not debating that, but, um, having the community really understand and know it's parks and appreciate what they're getting for their money is really valuable. what they're getting for their money is really valuable.
I I agree. Um I just think about the average Milwaukee and looking at their utility bill and seeing another fee. You know, that that does a lot too, as opposed to receiving property taxes, you know, uh.
They're used to paying it here. They're used to paying it. It's really, that's, I think, what I'm trying to say is just.
Especially something like that, it's their parts. We should have a say.
I mean, I think in the long term, it is worth exploring the fee, like in conjunction maybe with master planning. But I agree that at this point, it's the community discussion around leaving, you know, discussion around funding. And the fact that this would be completely new and different. Um, yeah.
Also, it's just to be clear, do you have to do it every five years? Could you do, could you go back at year four instead of year five first? I'm not sure. I think one of the interesting things that's gonna happen in this is because of when the court may make a decision and when the council may actually make a decision to leave, you may not actually levy the full five years, but the clock will start at the point that the community supported or denied, which that makes sense. I also, I think that's a great question. I'd like to bring it back on the sixteen. Yeah, I I think the answer is yes, based on the fact that Metro is coming back earlier than five years, but
Yeah, I definitely think some other context I I also, yeah, I think always come back to voters.
It's just good to understand. Absolutely. I have learned a lot over the last few weeks, so one more piece. Okay, um, so though that's not all the money that you need to run a park seat. So I just also wanted to talk a little bit about what the other dollars are that we've been talking about. We're gonna come back in September and talk to you if you decide to proceed about how we would actually operate a parks department that's different than what we're talking about here. This is really about how we construct the parks that we're doing and our future parks ability if we decided to occupy. Okay, so um we do a lot of our perks, I mean, already our capital cost using grants. Perfect example is what we're doing right now. And just for anybody who's watching, the conversation about whether or not there's a levy or a fee or the city decides to leave the parks district, does not in any way influence whether or not we continue with these three designs. So these are proceeding. We have the funding separate. It was uh received by the state. Thank you to representative powers and to uh Senator, right? They really made this whole thing possible. Uh Adam Moore is the project manager who's doing an incredible job. The engagement is really just dynamite. And I appreciate everything he's doing. So we do a lot of that through, through, I would call that historically. Uh, we also do it through grants. Um, I believe that Crumberg path, several council members went down to the state and cheer led for trying to get that through lottery funds. So we've done, and we've done this for years. We've done this on most of our parks over time. As we go out, we try and get, we try and get money from the state or the federal government or from a nonprofit. We secure those funds. Metro's been a big funder of these as well. And then we construct. So that's one way. The next way is we do actually have, the way we we've been supplementing that is to when we have the new urban renewal dollars, you will hopefully remember that you actually approved Dogwood. Is retrieving some of the funds out of the urban um pot. We also put money for the trail realignment, I believe, for Milwaukee Bay Park and to urban. So those funds have been allocated because, and I think Councilor Heisey can probably speak to this better than I can, but because it helps build our town, it helps revitalize and energize and bring energy to our team. Uh, then general fund is the other way. You all, when I first came to the city, actually put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general fund money for its park development. Those funds still exist. We've been transferring them each year into the new budget. So we're just straight up paying for it out of additional property taxes that are typically used for services the city provides. In this case, the council decided it was worth helping pay for something that another region. And then the final is SDCs, and this is actually where I'd like to spend a little bit of time. Uh, so all that growth that we talked about at the very beginning is leading to us receiving uh SDCs for utilities, for water, for stormwater, uh as well as receiving SDCs for parks that are then transferred to uh NCPRD at this point. Yes. Could you briefly define what an SDC is? Uh, so this slide just goes through that a SDC is basically a one-time fee that is paid by a developer to make sure that they are contributing to the system that existing residents have been paying for a long time. So that growth has new demand. More people need more parks. We have a lot of, you know, we have these parks, they're great parks, but they're small, and we don't have enough of them to handle the eighteen percent growth that we're seeing. So the developer pays a fee and then you all use that money towards other amenities that you create. They usually can't be spent a hundred percent of that C C's. Usually you're supplementing that with other fund sources because you can't justify having new people pay a hundred percent of the cost of the new entity. But in the case of parks, as Peter and I've been talking about, we've built a lot of parks over the last twenty, thirty, forty years. And that means that our existing people have paid money to build those parks. We now need more because of this growth. So it's gonna be, there'll be a calculation to define how much of the S D, the parks projects in the future can use SDCs that was. So how much money? Are you wondering? I was wondering. So um when I first came to the city, we actually were not collecting a ton of SDCs. We weren't having a lot of growth here in the city. But since over the last six years, we've seen a very steady and quick uptick in the amount of SDCs because we've seen an uptick in the number of that are.
So these are just parks that's these, these are just parks that's.
So you'll see uh the in twenty twenty-two this year, we hit about one point one million. Um, which is a major increase. Those are funds that um the city could direct towards other parks projects, say whether that's Milwaukee Bay or location. The question that we've had is, and what I've heard from my discussions with you at different times, has been the controlling where those funds are spent should be close to the units that are being that the users who are coming should have the amenities close to their homes and that you're concerned about those SDCs being used other parts of the district when we have the pressure that's coming to our neighborhoods. You, unfortunately, the city council can't control those funds unless you are responsible for park service, because those are automatically transferred to NCPRDs. Uh, you'll see that we have a significant amount of increase coming over the next few years. Um, we, the the numbers are not perfect. The analysis is a projection. Um, we did some guesstimating about which projects say they're gonna be done, but we don't think are gonna be done. And then so we did, we tried to be a little more conservative on what those numbers would be. But you can see it's a significant amount of money towards amenities for the city.
Say if you just go with the track, you're way out.
Right. It's a, yeah. So it was, just to refresh my memory, it was twenty eighteen that we agreed to the resolution where we were typical with co-mingling and that was thirty-six thousand dollars. Yeah, and now we're at a million. Yeah. Thanks. So we're now in a situation where this is the resolution that you all approved. Talked about co-mingling those funds. In part, we were willing, and and there's a lot of things that went into it. There are some benefits to co-mingling. If NCPRD was gonna transfer us differently because that was more conducive to what we needed to build, not every penny is perfect for every project, then great. But part of the discussion we put it at the DAC and other places is that maybe that transfer is not gonna happen. So there's a possibility that you would have these funds and the other grant funds and the other dollars from NCPRD all being spent in you. When the growth is.
Yeah, I don't remember this discussion, and I wish I a little look, because she was probably our rep to the district advisory board at the time. So, yeah, I don't remember what the pros were for agreeing to this.
I I think there was some good faith that we were putting into the discussions of trying to be a good partner at recognizing that we all needed more parks and that we were a little less worried about which pennies paid for what. It's more of an issue, I think, now based on what I've, I've heard, it's the DAC meetings, the conversation. Whether or not there's enough trust that you all are going to receive the benefit to be able to help build the amenities for our population.
So our SDCs go somewhere.
They can. The SDC process that's being presented to the DAC would co-mingle these funds and would like to be spent anywhere within the boundaries.
Do we know the percentage of SDCs that NCPRD gets that's Milwaukee?
Um, I don't know that. And part of what makes that question difficult is that the Happy Valley discussions, when they were happening, they were, they were generating so many SDCs that everyone else just thought, oh, really, right? So with their departure, it just changed that percentage. It's harder for me to to give you the answer, but I can look into it for a future meeting if you all wanna do, if you do wanna talk about this.
I mean, I do still think there are some areas, like you think about a grove and you don't see a lot of growth that I feel. There's some, but but there are some areas out there on both sides of two road five where there's still a lot of development happening. So, yeah.
I don't think you all, if you decided you wanted to do all this, I don't think you're removing all SDCs. I think that there are still a large number of SDC that are being generated in the Anne of Priti County. I think that there's a lot of opportunity for them to spend. Um, it's a question of, do you want the, those generated here to be spent in those same spaces? And that's the key.
So we passed this resolution, but they didn't change the policy.
It's currently on the DAC. I think it was actually a forward discussion this last month. They did a presentation update where they are. Um, I had a conversation while I was out of town. Actually, Peter and Kelly decided to send a letter just saying, hey, we think things may have changed. While you're talking about this, we'll take this with our council, but just a heads up, we think that there may be a difference. So we did, we have alerted them as they're going through this process that you only have a different stance than you had when you adopted this. But we do need to make it official if you all want to carry it on with staff.
So the jump, the big jump from a hundred thousand to a million was because you stopped sharing funds.
How much more construction, more plans, so I, the last, I see the dollar.
Yeah, all this is just, uh, it's being generated when you, you can drive around the city or walk around or bike around the city and you'll see it. Right? You, you go to Central Milwaukee, next to the train line, you see the units being built at the wrong apartments. Um, we're currently working on the Coho site, which is across the street from Maxwell Tree. If you go to the end of the block, you'll see the Henley site. You have the waiver leaves that's coming. So there's just, there's a lot of, of really cool opportunities. We had opportunity sites for years that didn't move at all. Um, and over the last six years, council and the planning commission have gone through a process to to move those into house. And in part, a significant part, that was in response to the community saying, we need more apartments, we really do. When we would do those community surveys, I can't remember what year it was, uh, it was twenty twenty or it was an earlier year, but but one of the biggest things people told us was there aren't enough apartments. So this is, this is us responding to community and to a regional and a nationwide housing. Well, I I think, you know, I've had several conversations with the school district over the years just about who's leaving. And it's our, it's our families, our newer families. It's people who usually make less money uh because they can't afford it. And typically, smaller apartments are a way for people to stay closer to home. It's also a way to age in place. Uh, so we have a number of people who give up their, their, their individual residential unit and they move into a place where they don't have to do stairs. They can continue to live close to family and amenities that they So there's, this is, I mean, that's a whole complex discussion that we've been having for many years. Uh, but the the short answer is, it's function. The goals that this community set are now producing. But we also saw during the pandemic that 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 creating those units means that we have individuals who didn't have an outdoor nature space to be able to be depressed, to be stressed, to meet with their families. Um, that's part of why we got money from uh the state is because there was a recognition that if you couldn't have a family dinner together because you were worried about bringing multiple generations to a very and you didn't see your family. It's not good for anybody. So there are a lot of reasons why SDC happen. They happen so that you can offset the pressure that the community is now feeling to, to create the kind of community you want. And that's one where you can get outside and you can be near trees. So we have two questions. Uh, I wanna be clear that tonight I'm not asking you to do anything. You're in study session, you actually can't give me direction, but you can generally not and say, please bring this back on the sixteen. So the first question is, would you like to consider placing a levy on the ballot? And if so, we'll work on giving you the verbiage and uh giving that to the Secretary of State. Okay, I see a lot of head nods. Thank you. He started to shake it now. Generally, it sounds like we're done. Um, and then the second piece is on the same meeting, would you like me to actually bring back a resolution? So we'll bring both of those to the next meeting. Um, and then, so we'll have that meeting in August. And then it sounds like you'd like to hear more about how we would actually set up a department if we did that. So we'll take the content that we already provided in the staff report, and we've got several other pieces now to add to it. Um, so Adam will be back in town, and I think the three of us will probably, who's that? That's September, just to give you a sense and to give the community a sense of how, what would it like, the city to support that kind of experience. Justin, did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so. Um, I was just looking up, uh, while you were finishing up the the SDC zones was uh in April of two thousand eighteen uh that particular resolution, and it appears to have been taken care of on consent. Uh, and I'm about to email you all the link to the packet from that meeting. Uh, and it appears a very short staff report, but it appears to have been a, based on an NCPRD study that was undertaken by a consultant, uh, looking at different models of SDC dis- uh dispersion, I guess. So there's an area base versus a all over the, all over the place. Uh, and that's, that's what that was based on.
Well, I do remember a s- a presentation from them on their SDCs. Their, their methodology for SDCs, that they were revisiting their methodology for calculating SDCs. And there was some feeling that, um once they changed that, which I know they haven't done yet, um there would be less available to projects like the one they are.
Yeah, I, I think what, what, what they presented, at least according to the staff report, they presented three possible next steps. And I think they were, and that that might be the presentation you're thinking of. And they may have asked for, um uh us to support a particular position on, on which step they took. But it, like I said, it's not very detailed, so I I've only been looking at it. And i- if you'll, you'll see the the report, and there's a big PowerPoint slide and whatnot. I'll forward it to you.
I would like to say thank you to Ann because this ten-page report represents a tremendous amount of work. And I know that Peter also put in a lot of time. I know Justin put in time. I know Adam put in time and Kelly, but thank you. This is a very helpful tool. All put together a report that I felt answered the questions that I have. So it's, it's very useful. And I really encourage anyone who's watching to take time to read the report. If you have questions, reach out to any of us. We're here for the community. We've been more involved in this conversation than, than, um, the community at large has been. So I do expect there to be questions and that's okay. We wanna be transparent. So, but thank you for giving us this tool. Absolutely. It was good to, I'm actually glad, just for, for the city's sake. To have sort of a posterity document that, that explains how we got here. I, I don't think we've always been here. I think there have been years when we've all worked really hard, uh, to make this work. But I think that there has been stress and, and friction for the last couple of years in particular that have made this, that have helped us.
I would also note, I mean, yeah, it was a really strong memo. I agree with Supressive Heisey. And, um. There was a new part of it to me, which was the whole calculation, the standards of. Park acreage per population size. And I've found that really interesting. It's funny because. Ten years ago, when we were first talking about the library expansion, there was a state standard on library size for population that, um, that came into the discussions. But I've never seen this in parks. I guess I should have known it existed, but I found it very interesting. And I think. Um, you know, the other point that sort of goes along with that is, is about deferred maintenance and. Um, you know, I know that the Parks and Recreation Board or Cities Board hasn't looked at, you know, has assessed the parks over the last. I, I remember hearing about it maybe five or six years where they all went out. Park and they sort of identified needs for, um, upgrades and deferred maintenance. So that is not a new. Um, we do have a lot of deferred maintenance and I hope that, um, we might be more successful. I just forget.
Like a teaser for the next time we discuss the topic. It is. Uh, so we're going to go into a lot more depth about just, uh, if you do place this on the ballot. And we stopped talking about the levy, uh, component of this, but I think that there's still a lot of discussion about. What the timing looked like in terms of parks vote, which right now we believe would be the city councils. And whether or not to leave. We're asking the judge. Judge may disagree with us, but we have to be prepared if they do decide that it, that the authority sits with you. So we'll be talking too about that part of this.
Thank you. The report is very thorough and someone like me that came out and you learned about. Uh, you guys have been a part of that whole process of strategy, really made it very important. Stands. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then we'll see you next week. Thank you.
That are especially as a journey.